...here. As you well know, we're going to be here today to discuss the hiring of a new city manager. The agenda is posted in the back if you'd like to get a copy and we will start with the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Sonier?
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much Suzanne. This is going to be a meeting of, could go anywhere from an hour, hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes. We have to be out of here by about quarter till 7:00. Councilman Carr would like to be out of here by about 6:15, so we're going to do the best we can to accommodate that. We're going to have many meetings, this clearly will not be the last, only the first. There's no indication on the agenda about public comment, but for those that know this council, we will take public comment and we'll take it in an orderly fashion when the time comes. And so I'll get to you, you can raise your hand and if I don't get right to you, just hold your comments and we'll get to you as soon as we possibly can. I think everyone in this room will agree on my next statement. We all want the best new city manager that we can possibly find. I think for council, now that we passed the 2018 budget, this could be the biggest issue in front of us this year, although you never know what might come up. The point is, it's very, very important, we know the importance. The word transparency, I think, is overused, but that said, we will do everything that we possibly can in public session and make it, you know, accessible to everybody. So, again, we understand what our responsibilities are and we're going to work closely together to get this accomplished. So, we're going to start tonight, I think, with process and I presented a process to council after David Butterey announced his retirement and we're going to discuss that because others have some other ideas and so I think we're going to start in that regard. The last couple of city managers that were hired, the process looked a little bit like the one that I laid out and that certainly doesn't mean that we need to stick to that process. That process included a couple of council members, a couple of city employees and a couple of community members to get together and narrow a pool down to a number and then they took that number to city council. In the end, regardless of the decision, ultimately, these seven people are going to make the decision on who is our next city manager. How we get to that point is one of the things that's up for discussion today. And so, we'll start in that regard. Those things that I referred to are similar to what we've done in the past, so the mayor and a city council member, I suggested that possibly John Schaefer, I suggested a couple of city employees, my choice would probably be Suzanne Leclerc, who's the city manager, excuse me, the city clerk and going to work very closely, and possibly Mike Farina, the city finance director who also works very, very closely, along with a couple of community members. For any number of reasons to get to a point where council could look at a number of applications and be able to make a decision sometime without having to have executive sessions, because not everybody knows this, but once more than two of us get together, we need public meeting and so, and a lot of the things that we're going to do are going to be done in executive session. So, a couple others have a different approach to this, but I'd like to get feedback from everybody on kind of the approach that I presented, pros and cons, which your ideas are. And again, this is going to be something that, it's the first thing that we're going to decide on today is process.
Can I make a point of order?
Please.
We're talking about things that were in executive session, is that right? Talked about, are we going to move out of those discussions?
For purposes of the discussion tonight, the mayor is suggesting a process, so that's the process.
Even though we discussed it in executive session. Okay, I just wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Sure. Mayor Protem, why don't you start?
Well, I think what we have in front of us, at least the discussion I've heard from immediately after Mr. Butterey attended his resignation and a couple of the council members have suggested that maybe a search committee might not be appropriate. You have two approaches. One would be a search committee with the makeup that you discussed, another would be use the council as that search committee. Either way, works, there are pros and cons. I would have to say that the first consideration would be which approach would expose us to the least amount of liability. And I don't know if, Erin, if you're, if you could talk to if there is any significant difference in using a group that's, you know, two council members, two city employees and two at-large members from the community versus the council at large?
The liability issues, I think, are, can be summed up in terms of a search committee might, might offer you, might offer the city as an entity slightly more insulation from a discriminatory hiring practice claim, but I don't think that it would be so material of a difference that it would suggest that that would be the way to go from a liability standpoint. So, council members would and could expose the city to varying practice liability or themselves to personal liability. If a search committee were involved, I believe the city would probably have an additional defense for such a thing, but I don't think, again, that that would be a material difference for one approach to the other.
Thank you. At some point in time, discussions about specific applicants, about salary, about any negotiation with a contract would have to go into executive session. When a search committee has those discussions, you would not have to have executive sessions until they came to the full council, correct?
Correct. The council meeting on, as more than, old discussions on materials that the state law requires be confidential, those are the applications of other than finalists. State law requires that those be kept confidential and so those would have to be discussed in confidence. A search committee would not have to go into an executive session to have those confidential discussions.
So, any conversation about applications would have to be done in executive session?
If the full council, if three or more are discussing, yes.
And to me, that's probably the only substantial difference in using the full council as the search committee versus a search committee made up of only two council members. If we serve as the search committee with one person in charge, there will be more likelihood that will be an executive session more than a search committee would. We will eventually have to go into executive session, but leading up to that, a search committee would preclude that requirement.
Thoughts, Val?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the charter specifies that the city council members only are to appoint the city manager under charter article four, section 4.1A. Doesn't speak to any committee or any such thing. We've got some highly qualified professionals right here are qualified to select a city manager and I would say without cost also. The other thing is that some of us have hired all kinds of people, have been in government, et cetera, et cetera. So, the charter really is very specific on the council. Now, some tradition here with looking at a selection committee is problematic for me because you're eliminating the council right up front. Two representative, the majority of council should be involved. John Schaefer and I, among others, have laid out a different process by which we can avoid executive sessions except very minimally and still go through an entire process of selecting, stretching it out even past the new council election a little bit. So, the new council has, and the whole, new council may look exactly like this, it's very possible and nobody's term limit it. But, I would make a strong point that the charter really tells us how to do this despite any tradition or history and we have laid out a proposal that shows an easy way to get around, get past executive sessions quite easily.
Tell me how you're going to get around executive sessions once we have applications in hand?
What specifically is your question?
We cannot discuss people's application in public. Once we have their application, it's got to be in executive session. The seven of us would have to be, which is fine, but what I'm saying is anytime we look at an application, we need to be in executive session. And if we have 10, 20, 30, whatever, I mean, we may have a number of executive sessions. My question is, why do you say that we won't have to go into executive session very much?
Well-
Not that it matters, we'll get to an executive session.
What we propose is a process by which scoring is implemented, one-way interviews are conducted without any council interaction and once we have those scorings done, we can do all this without talking amongst each other, then we can go to an executive session. It's pretty trivial in my experience, I've done this in corporations before. It's not, we're not going to eliminate them completely, obviously, but there's certainly procedures we can utilize and procedures we can, cautions, the city attorney's caution, we all know what the cautions are. And granted, there will be some executive sessions, but there were going to be executive sessions anyway.
Sure.
My argument is really strictly on the charter basis, that we have been chosen by the citizens of this community to represent them and the charter is the only specification as to how this is done and it speaks not to a committee at all, but speaks to the entire council.
And I don't argue that point at all. Ultimately, we will make that decision as a council, but my, my understanding of why search committees were used in the past is to avoid having more than two council members do the sausage making in order to avoid that executive session requirement. I could care one way or another, because ultimately, we will make the decision. I just think for expediency and to avoid executive session every time we turn around, the committee did make sense, but frankly, not worth arguing about. Whatever the rest of the council wants to do, I'm good with it.
I do think it's important, vote, to just, in case there's any concern, but the past practice wasn't aligned with the charter. It's important to make-
It absolutely was.
Just kiss me.
As remember the charter, and this is an important point for the audience as well, in Colorado, the charter is a document of limitation, not a document grant. So, in order to ban the use of a search committee, the charter would have to say search committees are banned and cannot be used.
So, my, my point is that, I guess I'm still on, I can't remember. My point is that we pretty much have a good executive committee up here if we're careful about how we do things. We've outlined up procedures, up for discussion, obviously, but there are certain careful ways we can do things and include the new council, which is important to me and lots of citizens out there, in a process that's going to take us up to, you know, four months. I would, I also speak to the fact that, I guess, I would like to make a motion that we accept Mr. Butterey's resignation notice because we haven't acknowledged that at all. We just went immediately into executive session without acknowledging that.
Well, I don't think you, I don't think you have to make a motion. I mean, I think the facts speaks for themselves. There's, the issue is governed by the contract, so he had 120 days to give notice and he provided that.
And we're not going to acknowledge that we received it all officially with a motion?
I don't believe that you have to, I think that you can certainly state that that was the fact, but, I mean, I'm not aware of a legal reason for doing that.
Okay. Well, I would make that motion. Yeah, we accept his resignation in a timely fashion, he gave it in a timely fashion is what I'm trying to do.
What would be the purpose?
I think I just stated it.
To satisfy your requirement, okay.
The 120 days notice, we haven't really acknowledged it officially.
It's by contract, it's by contract.
And it's not going to show up in the minutes either, unless we do some motion.
I have this letter, it's in the minutes, the letter that he read.
So, from a legal standpoint, we don't care.
Correct.
Thank you, Dola.
Still a motion on the floor. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
No.
Levy?
Nope.
Matthews?
No.
Sonier?
I don't see a problem with it, yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, four to three.
See, another reason why we don't want the entire council to begin this process. We don't seem to be able to agree on something as simple as the man had a contract, he fulfilled the requirements of his contract. We open ourselves up for liability by doing that. If you think that this gives us a window of opportunity to somehow terminate him before the end of that 29, or 120 days, you don't want to go down that road.
No, I think, I think this gives us 120 days without any sanctions or possible procedure. That's, I read it positively, in your terms negatively.
I don't see no negative. I'm not voting on this for a negative, I'm just voting on it for transparency. It was brought up, man handed in his resignation in appropriate time, with an appropriate amount of time. I think it's all legal and we're just being transparent. There's nothing underlying here, not on my behalf.
I think we thank, we all thank him graciously for his service, he's done tremendous service for the city. I just want to acknowledge that he's unfortunately given his resignation.
Ken, you want to continue with the committee discussion?
Well, I guess I came into tonight's meeting and whatever ahead of time, though I was expecting that we would do the same procedures we've done before, which I would be happy with. I'm not sure why we're really considering going into something totally different. I'm fine with the way it was done before, it worked before. Maybe I'm just not seeing something exactly right, but the way it was handled before is fine and I'm okay to go ahead with that.
Okay, Paul?
I've never been through the process, I was gone several weeks prior, did not know of the retirement. Went directly into executive session. I'm here to learn, understand what's happening, to be transparent and so, I sit here tonight with that as my goal.
So-
What?
Do you want a search committee or do you want the whole council to-
Oh, you're asking me that question? I thought you were just asking me my opinion.
Why don't I go ahead? Paul, is it okay if I take over?
Please do.
So, I guess our discussion here is how we're going to find these applicants. I mean, I think everybody's understanding that part because there's going to be multiple processes. We've got to find applicants, then we've got to narrow down the applicants, then we've got to figure out how we want to interview the applicants and then we want to figure out how we want to choose the applicants. So, right now, we need to break it down to how? Do we want to pay an outside group? Do we want to just do it ourselves? We get all the applicants and we narrow it down ourselves? We might only, we, everybody's thinking we're going to have 30 or 40 applicants, we might even have five, we might have two, we don't know that yet. So, we're assuming these high numbers. It really might even come down to the salary. If we give a salary range and nobody's going to run a city for that salary, we might get one applicant. So, really, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on a lot of this discussion. I think we need to get the applicants first. Hopefully, we have 10, hopefully, we have more than that. We get the applicants, we all look them over as council and we'll get emailed the applications like we do most applications. I think we can go from there. I feel like, Val, you and I are on the same page on some of this. I feel like you've made this brain surgery and I don't want it to be brain surgery, I want it to be simple, easy-
Would you agree with Val and-
Yeah, I want us to have full control of the process. I felt when, and I'm sorry Neil, that your process had some potential for bias and that's what I felt. You had bias to pick two people from the community, you had bias to pick two people from the city. No disrespect there Suzanne?
Then taken.
And Mike? But, I felt that there could be a sway of bias there, so I felt if the council has full control of the whole process, that it would be safer, because we are elected by the citizens to make this decision.
And we're going to make that decision regardless of committee or council.
Right.
The only difference would be instead of seeing, say, 10 applications, assuming we get 10-
Let's hope.
-it would be down to five or whatever we decide. So, that's the only difference.
So, my feeling right now is, I almost think we need to start with the job description.
We're going to do that in just a minute. John?
I'm in favor of the council deciding the situation. The next, the next, the current, the charter, just without, Val and I have, I guess, a little time talking about the, 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 the,
It was information that was sent to the council from Colorado Municipal League, CML, and from DOLA, Department of Local Affairs.
Thank you. I didn't mean to embarrass you or give you credit you didn't deserve. So, there are a number of documents that we need to generate, beginning with the job description.
Excuse me, John?
Yeah.
I just want to get this process first and get an agreement there and then we'll move forward. So, it just sounds like we've got an agreement, a consensus that this committee is the seven people or the six people to my right and myself. Is that, do we have agreement there?
Yes.
Good. Then we'll move forward. One question I have that I want to, that I want to chat about a little bit prior to the time we go into the documents, because I'm sure that's on everybody's mind, how we're going to move forward. And that's in the timeline that you suggested or whoever suggests, relative to new council. And so, the questions come to me by more than one person. In terms of process, does it make sense, since three council members and the mayor are up for election and we could seat an entirely new council in April, does it make sense to hold off on this process until the new council is sat before we try to make any decisions? In the outline that we got from Val and John, which I much appreciate all the work that you did, it looks like we're going to make a decision somewhere around the seventeenth of April, which is a couple of weeks after a new council member is sat. And my question would be then, going to miss out on the first three months of the process and then be thrown into a situation where you've got to make a vote with very, very little information. So, either, I would recommend, and you all tell me what's best, either we complete this process, try to complete the process by April third with the council that sits here today, or we make a decision to hold off on the application. We'll take the applications, but we won't review applications until after the new council is sat. I'd like to have discussion on that. Ken?
Well, I think we definitely should move forward with the existing council. They have the experience with the, with the disposition we're talking about. The new council may or may not, depending on the individual's background. I don't think it makes any sense to throw that in front of brand-new people. You know, we, as a group here, have been working with the city manager for some time, some more than others. And I think we're the ones to make that decision. I think it would be unfair and really not appropriate for a brand-new person to have that thrown in their lap. It's my opinion.
That's a good point. Carol?
I have to agree.
I, I agree as well that we have to accept the inevitability that it may default to later in April if we reject any of the applications that we receive or someone has accepted a position somewhere else before we get to them. But fundamentally, I agree with you that we need to start the process as, as soon as possible. We don't need to rush a decision on, on job description or salary range. But I, I agree with Noel. This is very simple. We have a job description that's pretty boilerplate. We need to allow our attorney to make sure, and CML, if they will provide that expertise to us, that we, again, it goes back, don't set ourselves up for a problem down the road. Make sure that that job description is appropriate, that we don't set ourselves up for liability. And then, then get this thing posted as soon as possible. I know we're going to discuss whether we use a, a firm or whether we use some existing national-level search engines. There are several that cost very little to use, that advertise nationally for this particular kind of job. That would be my recommendation. But, yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's any reason to postpone it until post-election.
Then the only thing I would say, because it sounds like Carol and Paul and Noel and others might agree, that possibly our timeline should end April third and at least we try, we agree that we try to make a decision by April third prior to the time that the new council is sat. If that's, is that, is everybody in agreement with that?
No. I'd like to speak, please.
You will? I'm just asking. And all you need to do is...
Well, they, they, everybody else to speak, but I'd like to speak. Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We laid out this decision chart to do most of the work before then the council shows up. Kickoff meeting, define scope, decide how to advertise, screen and reduce candidates, and then reduce, do Skype interviews, et cetera, et cetera. This whole process is just a, is just a, it's not rocket science, just describing each of these things that are in, under this time chart. I think we will have a good portion of things that we can do as knowledgeable council, dealing with the city staff beforehand, whether it ends on April third, May third, June third, anything. I think we can do, we as a council here, we've got good people up here, we can all work together and, and work to not jam this through before a new council. There's, there's a lot of citizens out there who would like to have some voice. But we can do most of the work up until that point and they can come up to speed. I think anybody who's, I mean, like I say, it could be the seven of us anyway, so it really won't matter. But the way this has all been laid out has been to get most of the work done before April sixth, I guess is when the new council is sworn in, something like that. And that would give us the ability to not only get all this work done, the majority of it done, but also give a couple of weeks. The way it's laid out is April tenth, evaluate any new late applicants and new candidates, the old council, finish up interviews by the seventeenth and make an offer. So, there would be a lot of data, and most of that will be public.
Applications won't be public.
The process will be public.
Process will be public.
Process will be public, I would hope. And so, any new council, if there are any, would, would also, would hopefully be paying attention to those processes and within days could therefore come up to speed on how we made our decisions in executive session and things like that.
Noel?
And it may be all seven of us. I disagree with Val on the timeline. Nothing against the new council members, whoever they may be, but they don't know the questions to ask, they don't, they weren't in any of the executive sessions. It's also easy to be in that position when you're not up for reelection. So, that, that kind of puts a little bias there. First of all, I think we need to have a cutoff date for applicants. Make that real simple. Make it February fifteenth, done. We just go from there. We might even get five applicants. Wow, we could have a decision in, in a week if we do interviews every day. So, don't make it...
A national search takes months, or it takes three weeks.
I, I disagree with that.
Well, I've done it before, so I know.
Okay, well, the point is, is that, is, we can, we can do a two-month search. Okay? But that gives us time to interview the applicants. I mean, if we have to have meetings every other day, I see nothing wrong with that. We did it with the budget practically. So, it's not like, it's not like we're, we can't. I just feel that there, that new, the new council, whoever comes in, will be jumping behind the wheel of a speeding car and not knowing where they're going. And they're, they won't be involved in all the app, because they cannot see the applications. They're, they don't know which ones we narrowed down. They might have had a completely different opinion. I like this, I just think the timeline can be crunched in a little bit more.
And what is, because we all know this, we may not, we don't know when the, all the applications will be...
Yeah, we don't know.
We'll have a deadline and we'll try to get it, but Val, what is wrong with setting a goal of April third? I don't understand what's wrong with that.
There's nothing wrong with it. I just, I would like to be inclusive of the citizens.
You're going to be inclusive of everybody. Here we are. We're going to continue to do this. I mean, what's wrong with setting a goal of April third?
The presumption, the presumption is that the new council is, are not going to be as smart as we are. I think that's a bad presumption. I, I think that's inappropriate. I think they can come up to speed very quickly on, on all our questions we've asked. We can show them in executive session in private, one-on-one, all the things we can do. About April third is, if you're talking about make a decision by April third or have somebody under contract make the decision?
Let me tell a little story, Val, here. My first meeting on council was to determine whether we were going to go forward with the Aquatic Center or not. And we went over all the budget numbers, my first meeting. Let me tell you, I was so lost because they had been working with it for years and then I sit down and I'm to, and I'm just looking at all these numbers and I, you know, and I think picking a city manager is a little more important than the Aquatic Center. So, having a council come in at the end of a decision-making process is extremely overwhelming for those individuals and just not right for us to put them in that situation in the first place. So, I don't know what you're thinking on this, Val. I, I know some of the applicants and, and yes, they are qualified, they, they are reasonable people, but they're not in the middle of, they're, they're coming in at, at not ten percent left of the whole decision process.
I think you should just clarify not applicants, candidates.
Candidates, sorry, candidates.
You don't know any. We just have to be clear.
Yeah, I was going to extend myself.
I, I, my, my, I agree with you totally Noel, but it's possible that this could be extended.
Right, right. And I, I just don't want to put them in that.
But my, my, my experience, and unfortunately, I have to hire and fire at least one person every year, is that the longer you open the window for applications, the more likely you are to lose applicants because they're going to go, it's first come, first served.
Yeah, they'll go to other jobs.
The longer you, you open that window, the more likely you are to lose candidates.
That's a very valid point, yeah. Because they, they're looking for jobs, they, they want a paycheck, they're going to move on to another, a better offer. So, if we put the timeline a month, or the deadline a month, or a month and a half, I, I don't think I could go without a paycheck for two months. I would struggle, but that's the, that's part of it too.
And another consideration we would have to make is, I don't recall what we, what is the end of David's one hundred and twenty day?
April twentieth.
There may be a point in time where we'll have to appoint an interim city manager if we extend it through the summer of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, let's move forward. John, why don't we move forward to what you were chatting about before? We'll talk about, well, first, we have a copy of a job description that we already have. I think that's one of the things. Salary structure, what was the third thing that you wanted to chat about, John?
Yeah, I've got a, a number of other things.
You want to start with the job description?
Yes, we, we have one. I've looked at others. They are similar. Is there enough detail there that we've called out the kinds of things we want the city manager, the new city manager to do? I think most of them are there. But as I think about other things that we need to do, someone needs to search salary information. I know Suzanne got some that covers not only Colorado, but...
I have some, if you want me to distribute it for you guys to take home and study.
Yes. Right, I would.
I'd like to just say where I got the information from. The first document that I'll pass out to the council is, well, from CML, it's all of the salaries for city managers in Colorado. A council member had asked me to break it down by five thousand to twelve thousand a population. I didn't get the opportunity to do that yet. But you'll see here, it starts with the highest paid city manager, down to the second pages, the lowest municipality and what they pay. I have that to hand out. And then the second document I have is from Employee, Employee Council, which we usually call Mountain States, and it's their salary survey of municipalities and different municipalities that they have surveyed. And here, I've listed the ones that they use that are in comparison to our population size, and it's their range for city managers. So, I have that to distribute.
All right. So, some of the things we'll talk about today, because we're not going to make many decisions. So, you're going to get information like the, what we have now for job description, you're going to get some of these salary surveys and other information, and then this conversation will be continued at our January eighteenth council meeting. So, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time, because most of us, most of you all at least, haven't seen this stuff before today. So, I'm going to ask everybody to look at it closely. John, we'll make sure that you list all the things that you're talking about. Certainly, the first two, we've got the starting, well, the job description, and then we'll talk about salary range. Those are two things we have to decide on. What else, John?
Search parameters, to what level? How broadly do we want to look for candidates? And I believe more broadly is better.
Let me ask you this, John. When you say more broadly is better, I agree that a national search would be good. Along with that, do you think we need to put aside some money to hire a professional search for, firm? Are you thinking we just advertise nationally with, with the right, you know, the people like IM, ICMA, that kind of thing? Or you, you envision us getting some help along the way with maybe a professional search firm or not?
Well, we, we could. I have seen what some recruiters charge, and it's apparently somewhere around twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. And for that, you will get a list of candidates and an opportunity to look at their qualifications and how they've been categorized by the recruiters who do this for a living. Well, do we want to do that or not? Well, I thought we had agreed that we seven have got the experience and the intelligence to find the right individual, he or she.
We don't have, I don't have the associations to reach out across this nation and understand who's looking for a job as city manager. I don't have those expertise or those skills. That, well, it takes people who are in the industry today to, to find the candidates and bring them here if we're going national. And I think national is a good way to go.
Well, thanks, Ms. Maria.
I think we can consider both. I, I have the same experience. Recent research was looking up, it was a three hundred and twenty-five K per hour. However, I, in this handout, I, I placed a whole bunch of things. CML newsletter has all kinds of ads for things like this, including Miss Free, web-based search media, Facebook, Woodland Park community pages, Monster, Career Builder, Glassdoor, Simply Hire, ZipRecruiter, US dot jobs, LinkedIn, ManagerCrossing dot com, Indeed dot com, ICMA dot org, which is one listed, which goes directly to city managers. My, my whole thing is, we look at public sector and private sector, private sector managers. You know, we're looking at a manager of seven people. There's a lot of people who qualify to do that. There's a lot of people who have run organizations very efficiently in the private sector also. So, those are all free, the ones I listed.
Well, not all. I think ICMA is, that is six hundred dollar fee. There's some small fees and some pieces of it.
I've said nothing. Twenty-five thousand.
Councilmember Carr, one other one that I'd like to bring to your attention, that Debbie Miller brought to my attention today, is the chamber can do a nationwide search also. Job posting.
I thought we were looking at CML to help us out, and there was also a city manager website.
That's ICMA?
Yeah, is that what it is? Okay. Those, I think those would get to the most qualified people. But yeah, I agree with Val that Monster and all that, but the underlying question is, who is going to post those? Who's going to post the job de, the, the job in those websites?
The city.
Anticipated that Suzanne would do that. Our direction, is that what you all were thinking?
I would think so.
Because we're going to have the job description and then we'll put together, Suzanne, did you hand out the posting from Green Mountain Falls, what CML did for them?
Some of the council received, you know, is there anyone that does a copy of that from them?
Yeah, I agree.
The point is, we'll, we'll make that determination, right? And then, and Suzanne, who do we want to reach?
One, one thing that I, it just hit me is that the, very important is, here's the job description, but when in the process are we going to, when we're hiring that individual? I, I think we really need to look over the, the contract. Because I, I think there were a lot of concerns with the current city manager's contract that maybe we can go over. I just, I, it's just a tangent that I didn't even think about until now. But just keep it in the back of your mind.
Absolutely. Val?
One of the things I had on here was the council to come up with that ad text in combination with the staff. I think between now and the next council meeting, which is not...
Next week.
How about let's pick one person, Val? You want to be in charge of that? Put that text together, bring it to us and we'll approve it or we'll add to it or whatever? Would you like to do that?
I'd be happy to. I guess, I just for procedure purposes, we're still going to, so send it to Suzanne, she'll forward it to you. Carol goes, say, Noel, let's change this. Neil say, let's change this. It'll come back. So, we'll do that back and forth.
And then we'll look at it at the next council meeting.
Just for clear, no reply, all, some people in here like to do that.
Yeah. And, and things will go wrong as we're going through this process. And that's the one benefit, if you think about it. I mean, Paul kind of alluded to it. We're not professionals in this regard. Some of us have done a lot of hiring in our careers. I get that. I don't think anyone here is hiring a city manager for the municipal level. So, there's some value in hiring a search firm. It doesn't sound like we want to go that direction quite yet. And I'll just say what happened at PPACG, just as a reminder and, and, and just so everybody knows, we, we took a process last year and started in January and we posted, this is for the executive director, we posted and received maybe, we, we received some good applications, like I'm sure we will, but felt like we needed more applications, like I'm guessing we will. The process then went to, went to a search firm that we paid the number you all are talking about, about twenty-five thousand dollars. That number greatly increased after that. The point is, the process took so long. When we originally came down to our first three finalists for interviews, they all had found a job in the interim. So, we got to be considerate of our applicants, and that's another reason why I don't think it hurts to, without, we want to be everybody inclusive, but want, you know, if we get a great applicant, try our best, obviously, to get them. And so, the, the process took a long time, nine, ten months. So, we lost some good people. We ended up with a good person, but just something to think about in, in that process. We didn't get out there nationally to start with, like you all are talking about, so I think that's going to help us immensely. Val?
One thing, I imagine that I hired software engineer, VPs of engineering, VPs of finance, things like that. A lot of times, those people are on the street looking for jobs. This is kind of a niche job. So, I think most of those people will probably stay employed, if they're smart, until they get a job offer anyway. So, I think they're, I...
Unless they're looking for another job just like us.
Well, yeah. I mean, they probably would be. So, we've, I think, in my case, where I had to hire professionals, I had to hire them yesterday, I think is probably not as big a potential problem, except that you just described how, how it is, that it's perfect.
So, Neil?
Sir?
Mayor? Do we want to discuss a, a, a date where we want to stop the applicants from coming in, maybe the fifteenth?
Maybe we'll discuss a date to start the applicants first.
Oh geez, now?
When we're going to put it out there. Well, hopefully, after our next Thursday meeting, we'll have something that we can post. Do you think that's a reasonable goal?
I think so.
And then we should have a list and, and maybe Suzanne, I know that, that the work you guys did is great, you got this list, but let's get Suzanne a list of, of all these resources to all of us, and then we can add whatever. And so, I'm hoping next Thursday, we got a job posting, we got a job description, and we're able to move forward in some regard. And things like contracts. But I guess one thing we need to do before that, for sure, is we need a salary range before we post.
I think that at the meeting next week, we would have a, after reviewing this, yeah, better understanding, we can do a range of proposal ranges. better understanding, we can do a range of proposal ranges.
So Val's document will be almost complete, with the exception of possibly the salary range. Yeah, I would, I would, I would ask, pardon, I'm sorry. I would ask that the council bounce back, like we're in a chat session almost in response, because I don't want to miss anything, anybody, one-on-one, you to back and forth and this kind of thing, so that we have it ironed out by next Thursday, and we don't have a lot of discussion. Does this sound good to everybody?
Yeah. Mayor?
Sir?
I think there's a lot of work to be done here up front. My suggestion, my proposal is going to be that each one of us take one of these documents. It's gotta be completed somewhere in this process, and sooner is better. And so Val becomes a PR expert, or whatever. And so that we could even pull jobs, documents, out of a hat or an envelope, and that's what you're responsible for doing by date X.
And what are those, besides the couple that we've talked about? Do we have seven?
We got seven, and one of those that's very important is, how are we gonna evaluate these candidates?
That is?
Questions and the criteria, and, yeah, it's a very important task. And we've all gotta be kinda on the same page or chapter when we talk about what's important, because, you know, we, we've got a lot of different ideas here.
Yep.
There, there is an approach for that, that part of the process. I think, I think we're, we've all collectively said that hiring a firm to manage this for us may not be the most appropriate way for us to, to find candidates, because there are a number of websites, search engine tools, that specifically go out to an audience that would be interested in this kind of job. We get the applications in. We can then hire yet another expert in this area, an HR expert who would come in and school us on the interview process, the types of questions that we should ask. That only teaches all of us, but it also keeps us honest, keeps us from, well, again, it goes back to liability. One of the hard lessons I've learned is, you can't ask interview questions off the cuff. You've gotta have a set interview question that you ask every candidate. But that, just, but at some, at that point, when we reach, when we have all the applications in, very quick tutorial from an HR expert, that may cost, I don't know, any, any, for an hours of, hour of work, I don't know, but it certainly wouldn't be twenty-five thousand dollars.
Suzanne, is that a CIRSA?
The one that I was mentioning to you, Mayor, was a seminar that the department heads here at the city attended that was sponsored by CIRSA from an independent person. It was, her name was Dr. Miller. And she did a whole training on succession planning, as well as questions to ask on interviews and training on how to conduct interviews.
I'd like to have that be my piece, so I can have CIRSA answer all those questions. No, no.
I, I, John, I don't disagree with your approach. I, I think it, for, just to simplify it, to have Val give us a draft of a, a job description, and then let us, you know, do it via email and-
No, I, I think that's, that's fine, because we do need to be moving out here quickly.
Well, I'm sorry. Aaron?
I would like to just add on to what Councilman Harvey is talking about. I'd like to just add on to what Councilwoman Harvey is talking about, and that is the use of a HR expert, HR consultant, and I think you would want to back that to the point where you also have that person reviewing your applicant requirements. So you've got your job description, but then you've got your applicant requirements. So many years of experience at this, so, no less than this many years of doing that. And the reason I think it's really important for someone who is very up to date on the hiring practices and the claims that go against municipalities when they start to screen candidates on the wrong or vague criteria, because those leaked into the applicant requirements. I think it's really important to have that person on board at the point where you're creating those and then you send those out. So I would strongly endorse that idea and suggest that you could get a couple of those people to submit some proposals probably within time for your next meeting, and you could review those in your executive session.
So whatever we collectively decide is a job description should be reviewed by this, this entity?
I would recommend that as well. Definitely your job, your applicant requirements, but I think you're going to be benefited, and it will enter to the, to the citizen's benefit and avoid liability issues if they also can look at that job description.
Yeah, the applicant, the application in itself is extremely important.
Well, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suggested that, this is something that can be done anytime, that, on the second page of my little handout, suggested that the council, each one of us come up with six to 10 questions and throw them out there in a big old basket, and maybe those might have some public interest and community interest, as well as personal interest that could be collectively milled down to a set of questions an HR specialist can look at. I, you know, I just suggest that we all put out some, because Carol has some different questions than I have, and everybody will have different questions. Just a suggestion. Let's get back to what we want to accomplish by our next meeting, so we're all on the same page. I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Do we know of an HR expert that we can?
I, CIRSA has provided us with at least three firms that we, thank you.
Would it not be wise to follow through with that?
No.
Now?
Ask them about costs associated, those kinds of things, what they can provide.
Ask cost association and what type of guidance they will give to us.
Suzanne, can you take care of that for us?
Absolutely.
That's a good point. And then at least we'll have a little bit, better idea of costs associated and what they can actually do to help us. So, a job title, everyone has in front of them, I'm sorry, job description, everyone has, so we can look at that individually and add or subtract. We have to come up with the salary range, which we'll do at the next council meeting, based on the information that was presented to us. Val's gonna take care of a posting that we can, and Suzanne will give us all the firms that, that we want to post with, and we can add or subtract to those. Suzanne, if you'll try to get that information to us too sometime in the next few days.
Absolutely.
What else do we need prior to that, John? What am I missing? Prior to next council's meeting?
So we're talking nine days?
Nine days, yeah.
Okay, the eighteenth? Well, I think we, we talked about a number of tasks, and, and I worry that we all sort of look to Suzanne to take care of it, except Val now has an action item, so, and I think a couple of you have also said we need to all have the same level of communications and things that are flying back and forth. Yep. We need to keep track of action items. Who's, who's, be responsible for doing lots of things? I always call it a good meeting when you leave it, and a lot of people-
That, that was the beauty of a search committee, is that you could designate a scribe. In this case, our scribe is our city clerk.
Yep. Sorry, Suzanne. I tried.
It's okay. Just remember, I'm running an election, too.
Okay.
And that's absolutely true.
I have one question, Suzanne, this is for you. Are you able to take this compensation survey and do it by population?
Yes, I had mentioned that earlier, that Councilmember Carr had asked me to give you the data that way. I didn't have the time to prior to this meeting, but CML, I've put in an email to them, and they can pull it, they can extract it from, I think the criteria was a population of five thousand to twelve thousand people. As soon as CML extracts that information, I will forward it on to the council.
You can Google it, too.
Oh, I knew, I was gonna crack a joke, but I didn't.
Val? I sent, I sent this, I think you sent this out to everybody, right?
Yes, sir.
These things? I, I guess I would ask that everybody tweak this to their preference, so we can talk about it next Thursday. How's that sound? Good. You're talking about this document? This, this comes from this. Okay. So they're, they're kind of connected. Got it. Since, yeah, I got a couple people that would like to chat, and Kelly Case signed up, so Kelly, if you want to come forward and come to the microphone, and we'll take a little bit of time right now for public comment.
Did that work? Okay. Good evening, council and staff. I'm Kelly Case, I'm 1210 Evergreen Heights Drive. I just want to share some information with you. In my tenure as the Finance Director with the city, I went through the process of the selection of two city managers, and I'm, I'm hoping that you all are referencing process from when we did that in the past. When we selected Mark Fitzgerald as our manager, we had a lot of applications. We have always had a lot of applications for that position in those two times that we've done it. So I don't think that your concerns about not getting many will be one of your problems. It's a lovely place, and I think people really like to come here.
Could you say that again?
This is a lovely place, and I think that a number of folks would, would love the opportunity to serve in this community. I also would ask you, one of the things in, in response to Mr. Sawyer's comment about, or, oh no, it was you, Mr. Sawyer, about sitting down at your first meeting and considering a fourteen point three million dollar swing pool.
Yeah, that was exciting.
This is simply hiring a city manager. Not that it's simple, and I don't mean to downgrade that, but it is, it's, it's hiring a staff member. Although they're a contract employee and they're working for a board instead of a supervisor, it's still a hiring process, and there's lots of reference material and things to do. I would suggest that, there's been a lot of talk about the job description and the need for HR scrutiny. I would suggest that all the job descriptions in the city need that scrutiny, because not only is, although it's a contracted position and not necessarily a hired position, all of those job descriptions have the opportunity to be a liability, if you will. When we, when David Butterey became the manager, we had a slate of candidates that were brought down from a stack of applications, and we offered the job, as I remember, to more than one, and were unable to hire anyone out of those that were taken out of the stack. And that's when David threw his hat in the ring. So your concerns about losing qualified, good candidates are well-founded, and so a very efficient process is, is, will benefit you the best in this community. And I'm sharing this because, I don't think any of you, maybe Ken was here during one of the processes of selecting a manager, but just sharing that experience. The charter is a very important resource for you in scrutinizing and looking at what the responsibilities are of the manager. So I would strongly encourage you to take that as a reference document as well. The last thing I want to talk about is, although you are the hiring body and the one that's contracting with the manager for, as you do with the attorney and with the municipal judge, you work with them, I don't want to make this seem minute, but you work with them on a limited basis, when you compare the way that the manager works with staff. You have a management staff here that works with them a minimum of eight hours a day, and so through the process previously, staff got to interview the manager candidates when it was the last set, and provide input as to whom they felt the most comfortable with and why. I would strongly encourage you to do that. Staff reports directly to the manager. Their jobs and their performance evaluations are directly linked to that position, and their goals and development as staff come from that position as well. Don't leave them out of this process, because they work with them the closest of all. And of course, your community, your citizens, and your new council needs to also be involved. I think politically, right now, there's not always a good taste in this public's mouth for this council and for this manager. So for political sake, I would suggest it would behoove you to give good consideration to whomever will be seated in the four positions that are on the ballot. I think you all will do a great job. I think we'll get some great candidates, and thank you for your ear.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Who else?
May I say one thing?
Please.
The reason this meeting is tonight is to be transparent and involve the community, the citizens, council, the employees, all, in this process, and not to have any thoughts or inclinations that we're not doing our job and we're trying to circumvent things, and that's not the case. What you see up here, personally, my prayer is that we are successful in our search, and we find ourselves a great manager who can work with the employees of the city and the staff, and with the council and the mayor, and also with our legal counsel. She's responsible for protecting the city, and in doing so, she protects council and the citizens. This process is an open process, so we can all see and make our contributions to it. I do hope that everyone who is here sees that we're, that that is the effort that we're trying to go through now. I just wanted to say that.
Good. Thank you. I think you were the next young man, if you'd like to come forward.
Am I the young man?
Yes, you are. Understand, it, it's all relative.
I've got some gray coming in my beard, so it's, my name is Cam C. Lee. I've lived here for two years, live at Fifty Old Wagon Road. I don't know if we have to do that tonight or not. I've been attending meetings here for a couple of years. You've probably seen me. Have not given my opinion, just observing. Have enjoyed observing you guys. Tonight, I come up as a resource, if I can be, for you guys. So five years ago, I sat in a very similar position to you on an executive board where a CEO stepped down. We did interviews of three different firms internationally, there were search firms, because we came to a point of realizing, this is more work than we can handle, and putting this on our current staff is tough. This organization was about fifteen million dollars annual budget. We ended up retaining a search firm in Colorado Springs- We ended up retaining a search firm in Colorado Springs. I was chairing this team and committee, and it didn't feel exotic to retain a local firm. There was another firm in Houston, one in California. But we connected well with this firm called Agora Search Group, I'm now VP of Relationship Development with them, sold my business, and this is what I do. I'm not here to sell anything, I've never done a search like this. We've done searches with Amazon, with Samsung, currently working with a group in Florida called Cross International, $313 million. So, big groups, but this is always the challenge. The questions I'm hearing tonight are the same questions I've heard. How do we do this? Where do we start? What are the steps? And I would offer this, this position is too important to get wrong. The average tenure of a city council, or a city manager's two and a half years. The cost of that happening, and I literally did five minutes of research, so I didn't come with all this prep, but the problem with that is it costs a ton of money to have the person who's influencing your culture more than anything else leave in that amount of time. One of the things I've observed is that Mr. Buttery, there are people that love him, and there are people that despise him. One of the qualities of a leader is the people who follow him. And I will say that I have found the city staff to be extremely loyal to Mr. Buttery. That's big, that's huge in leadership, and you don't want to lose those staff members, you don't want to lose your Public Works Director, you don't want to lose your city clerk. So, the cost of getting this wrong is much greater than just the wrong guy that didn't work out, so we put out applications again. One of the things we always say about putting an application on monster.com is, you're going to get the best of the unemployed, the unhappy, the unqualified. We always say you don't want the applications, you want the guy who's happy where he's at right now, that we would call, I'm not a recruiter, we have people that recruit, but we want to call those people that are happy where they're at, not the guy who's miserable and says, well, maybe the next place will make me happy. We always want that guy who loves what he does, but he says, hey, I'm willing to stick my toe in the water and consider this, and to say, this could be an option. One of the things that boards often miss, and this is a different position than a VP, it's a different position than a CMO, CFO, because he's living in two worlds. He comes and he's accountable to you, and the rest of the time, he's leading a team that's accountable to him. So, he's in this unique role that's different than most positions. This guy has to have unique qualifications that fit culture. One of the things we do is send surveys out to staff. Staff know what culture is, they can communicate culture through surveys that are anonymous to you very, very well, to say, here's what we value here, here's what's been a value in our community. The same thing would happen with city council in this case. I think you guys should be surveyed in that, in a way that lets you communicate. I would survey the community and say, what does Woodland Park value? The last thing you want is a guy here who's a great guy, who's a great candidate, but he's not a great fit for the town. Does that make sense? So, that's kind of, that's what I wanted to share with you guys. I mean, our process is heavy, and again, if I can be a resource in some of that, I'd love to, but I think it's good to be able to hear from staff to say, this guy's really going to fit with what we have and who we have. I love Woodland Park, I just happen to live here, I do this all over the country, and I've only done one search in Colorado. So, if I can be a resource in my own town, I'd love it. Love this town, enjoy it, it's why I'm here, it's fun to watch, it's fun to watch you guys do your thing, and so I just want to be a resource to you guys if I can.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Yep.
And keep coming to council, you're going to be a great resource in our community. Okay, Mr. Carlson? Saving the best for last.
No, no.
No, you're not the last.
Thank you, Bob Carlson, 1155 Windflower Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado. I think we're off to a good start this evening. One question, the documents you've been handing around, will they be posted on the Woodland Park city page, so that we can see what's being discussed, like you do in normal council documents?
If the council desires, I can do that.
Okay. I mean, that would be total openness with the public, and perhaps people would have comments to Val, for instance, in the job description. The other question, comment is, I agree with Carol, that maybe doing initial search through a company might be expensive, although we've heard from an expert here that there is some value in that. But I would support the idea of, once you have a slate of candidates, that you hire a firm to do those interviews, whether it's a firm or an individual that CIRSA could put up, or CML. But in my experience at the Defense Department, in the more senior positions, they would hire the Gallup Organization, who can identify the strengths and weaknesses of candidates. Yes, you can have a manager that, yes, he's got a master's degree in public administration, he's got 10 years of leadership experience as a city manager, et cetera, et cetera. Those are just check, check, check. But you don't know what kind of manager, what strengths or weaknesses that person has, and that, I think, takes a little extra skill. Gallup has been in this business for many years, and has really developed a great process for doing that. So, when we open it up to other potential people, I would recommend adding them to the list, too, because-
It's Gallup.
They're national experts in this whole thing. So, that's all I had, thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Did you want to have discussion on?
Yeah, the documents, real quick. I don't think Val's documents, that he, the personal ones, should go out. I believe the ones that you provided, Suzanne, should go out, because I think these are, Val's are work in progress, correct?
Job description and salary structure throughout this.
Maybe the Green Mountain Falls, that's it, that I see, is that okay, Bob? Where do you go? Oh, there you are.
Everybody in agreement? It's okay to post?
The working documents, not the work, just that.
Yeah, not the working documents.
Yeah, not the working documents.
You're going to narrow this down.
Yeah, I'm going to pull the, do you want me just to post the data from 5,000 to 12,000?
Five to 12,000, that's what we're going to look at.
Okay.
And this.
That's already on the city website, anyone, that's a public document, the city manager's job description, all our job descriptions are available to the public, but I can post it again.
And you can-
Can you do this one?
I can post the mountain states, it doesn't list individual municipalities, and that one would be okay to post.
That'd be great, thank you.
So, just for my clarification, not the ones that Councilmember Carr has-
Correct.
Introduced, okay.
Just the public, yep, right.
Got it.
Is that a problem? Oh, yeah. I mean, discussing it here in public.
No, that's not a problem.
Okay, who's next? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Joseph Whiteman from 318 State Highway 67 in Woodland Park. I apologize for my experience, or my appearance, it's a little difficult to get here early. I'd just like to make a couple of short points. There's a notion expressed that longstanding council members may have more expertise to make the decision for the new city manager, and I would agree with that, especially that you all have the access to these executive meetings. However, I would expect by that same token of expertise, that perhaps the council members would be able to summarize and gather this information to present it to the new council members, so that they can make an educated decision. And I do think it's important to honor these new council members that are coming in, because this is a very important decision for the city. And I think when it comes down to it, there's really two key components to making this decision, and it's being well-versed in these executive meetings, and also just rationale. And I think you need to honor the rationale that will exist with these new council members. The other thing I'd like to address is that there is a notion that you may lose, excuse me, lose applicants because of the time, if you extend that duration, because, and I forget who said it, but that people are in need of a paycheck, and I think that's a little short-sighted, because some of these applicants are probably already going to be working, and they may be looking at this as just a way to advance their career, they may already have a job. So, I think to make that assumption that you may lose applicants because of a short window is perhaps a little short-sighted. And in the end, I'd like to just say, too, that I don't think anyone really has hired anyone for city manager, I know this has been stated, but I'd just like to reiterate it, for city manager, municipality, or a job this big. So, I think it's important to acknowledge that new applicants, or new council members, rather, may have expertise in this field as well, coming in, so, that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Deb Miller?
Hi, Deb Miller, 1246 Ethereal Circle, Colorado Springs. Cam, you mentioned he may be the applicant. I'm going to have to say, just in the world we live in nowadays, it could be a she. I agree with a lot of things that have been said here at the podium tonight, but I want to flip this a little bit, and what I want to talk about is public and public perception. And while we talk about the applicants and what you're going to do, and what you're going to post, and the job description, things such as that, my experience in a nationwide search, and certainly my experience personally in looking at a position, is that person's going to be looking at us, and that person is going to be looking at our community. And I say this tonight because I think it's very important that we, as a community, are transparent, but what we are putting out there is factual, and what we are saying, whether it's on social media, whether it's just in a conversation between two people, that it's factual information that we're putting out there. Because an applicant that is going to come in and apply for this position is going to do their homework, and they're going to come in, and they're going to talk to people in this community, they're going to interview people in this community. And so, it's important, I think, from a public standpoint, and why I wanted to say that tonight, is that what we are talking about in this community, that we talk with facts, and I thank you tonight for making this open, so we can hear the facts, that we, as leaders in the community, hear what you're doing, and we talk factual if we're asked something. So, thank you for that tonight.
Thank you. Not only to hear, Deb, but like everybody else, right, and that's to provide comment and insight for us and direction, and that's why we're not just doing this to, because it's 2010, and 2018, we need to be transparent, the most overused word in the entire world, but this group of people can help us make a better decision, and that's why we ask you to be part of it, we ask for your comment, and we will continue to, and you can email us, you can call us, I think most of us are available most of the time, and so, we're going to have a transparent process, call it what you want. But I think our council has always had that kind of approach, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to work with everybody in this room, so, thank you all very much. Noel?
So, let me just, let's clarify transparency. Transparency is the process, not the individuals, the applicants. So, I'm understanding that we are not going to tell people who's applied. Okay, so transparency is going to be the process, and how we're going to go about finding the next city manager, but the only people that are going to know the applicants are sitting right here, until the final city manager, I believe, is announced.
Until you have the final list.
Final lists.
I'm imagining finalists, three or four or five, whatever we decide, in a situation just like we're in today. And that's what we did at PPACG, opened to the public, worked great, not that they would have input, but they were there to hear, and then made a decision, and then went into executive session, basically, only to discuss contract. So, we made the decision in public, took the vote in public, and I think it's what people want to hear today.
I think that if the city attorney would be willing to clarify their state statute that dictates that we have to announce the finalist names publicly in the paper?
They have to be published in the paper, and that has to occur at least 14 days before you make your offer.
I'm going to turn off my phone that week.
Thank you.
About 6:30, I think we've covered what we wanted to. Tell me what else we can do before we adjourn. We'll look forward to the January 18 city council meeting, and we all kind of have our marching orders, some more than others, and again, appreciate certainly Val and John, and all your input, and, you know, look forward to it. I, I'm anxious, I'm excited, I'm thrilled with the possibility, because we all agree, it's a big step for our community, and hopefully we can find somebody that will be here more than two, two and a half years. I know, it's easier said than done. Aaron?
And Mayor and Council, I would like to add an executive session to the meeting on the 18th, and that is so that you have the availability to discuss benefits and salary in an executive session. Certainly, you could do that outside the executive session, but then what you do is you have, you haven't given yourself probably the best negotiation position with anybody that you would be negotiating with, and it's always my advice not to negotiate against yourselves. So, that would be the reason that that would be on your executive session agenda.
And so, that would look like, once we get to wherever this is old business, we could possibly break for executive session and then come back?
Yeah, certainly, if you're ready at that point to have that.
Okay. Sounds good, anything else? Appreciate you all being here, have a great night.